...of the whole meeting for the village of Bartlett for May 2, 2017. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Here.
Carbonell?
Here.
Dane, Danny Absinthe Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have this evening on our committee, the whole agenda. I believe our staff has requested to pull for our next meeting. So do you want to update us on that reason, Mr. Administrator?
We need to work through some of the language in the bond ordinances. We found some conflicting language between our existing bond ordinance from 2007 compared to the one that was for under consideration tonight. So we wanted to pull that item off the agenda until we had that language straightened out and we were comfortable with it.
Good. And thank you for the early advance notice on that. Other than that, we have an item under Finance and Golf Committee. And standing in for Chairman Dane is Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. One thing we ask staff to look at is different revenue sources. So I think, Mr. Doughton, are you taking over?
To introduce this item a little bit, when we had our strategic planning session, the board was interested in discussing a food and beverage tax. And when we moved through the budget process, we were also charged with finding a way to stabilize the budget in terms of not using reserve funds to balance and find a more sustainable revenue source. So that is what Todd has put together for you, and I will turn it over to him to walk through the memo.
Thank you. Again, in the budget this year, we just approved the budget, and we did leave some positions open for some savings of some money. We approved a budget that is going to use some general fund balance, a little over $400,000. And we left the property tax levy flat. We've had some decrease in income taxes due to the issues at the state level. So these are some of the, a couple of the options that would be favorable or available to us as a home rule community. I know there's some discussion on the food and beverage tax. Previously, we talked about, and it's been presented to the board. One of the downsides of the food and beverage tax is that it's administered by the village. That means the village would make the rules, create the forms. The businesses would submit directly to the village, and the village would be required to enforce that and to make sure that there's compliance throughout the village. So that's one of the downsides of the village. Presented here also is a home rule sales tax. Down in the below of the memo is just a comparison to some of the towns around us, and it shows their home rule sales tax rate. And as talked about earlier during the budget presentation, Bartlett doesn't have any home rule sales tax right now, and all of the towns around us do. So I don't think it would put us at a disadvantage if we did have a home rule sales tax. Part of the home rule sales tax is, it's on all the businesses in town, but it does not apply to the food and the qualifying drugs. So it doesn't, it's not groceries, things like that, things that are taxed at the 1.5% rate now. It's only the general merchandise that would be, the home rule sales tax would be added to that. So that's an option that's available for us. If we did go with the tax, it can only be implemented twice a year, July 1 and January 1. So we missed the July 1 deadline as far as approving the ordinance and everything, getting that to the state, since the state administers that. The next deadline for, to be implemented in January would be in October. So it's not, there's no time crunch or anything like that. We've already passed a budget with the revenue that we have. So this is just something, I want to present the numbers, is some options out there. I know, I listed all of our revenue. You can, I know another thing that we need to discuss is our fees. We have an adjusted fees. We talked about the parking tickets and implementing the parking ticket system, and we need to look at that down the road. But as far as revenue, as a home rule community, one of the, a good option, I believe, is for a home rule sales tax. I know we've, we've got other options out there. You might have some ideas, but that's what, that's what the staff looked at and would be something that would be easy to do. If you have any questions in regard to that, the material that was presented, I'd be happy to answer that, or we can look into more things if you'd want us to.
Yeah, I like how you put together the different percentages and how much revenue we could generate by that. Just by looking at this, it looks like the local sales tax is our best route if we need to generate some revenue versus the food and beverage. Looks like every community around us has a local sales tax. So does anyone else have anything else to add?
So just a quarter of a percent is 400,000. If we implemented a quarter of a percent, it would shore up the gap that we took out of the general fund.
Yes, that's right. As far as what we're using this year, we did, we did leave some positions open. So I would say, just to keep up with the basics, we're looking at 2% to the general fund. We've been, we've been reducing, holding staff open, using some fund balance. And I know that 400,000 would help, but I don't think it would be the full amount needed to keep up.
Gotcha.
I definitely think that's, a local sales tax is better than actually raising people's property taxes. So I think if we had to do something, the local sales tax would be the route to go.
I also think that that's a better alternative than the utility tax.
Absolutely.
Because you have an option to go buy something.
If we actually had, let's say, a half a percent of a local sales tax, could we eliminate our utility tax? It'd still have a surplus after that?
I, I do not think so, because the, that would be about the same as our positions that we left open and then the, using the fund balance. So I don't think that the half a percent would allow us to eliminate the, I think we're at 750,000 utility taxes right now.
Does that combine the electric and gas?
If we were to approve the local sales tax and the food and beverage tax, would you fill those positions? Is that, is that the thought, or are we not thinking that far ahead? We're not doing this to fill positions, we're doing this to address structural issues in the budget.
That is correct. I mean, we look at budget positions every year. We, you know, we look at staffing rates and what we can manage and what we can't. Really, this is looking at those structural deficits that we had to really shore up the opportunity to have a balanced budget without digging into unsustainable revenue. And so I guess the short answer is no, we're not doing this to fill positions, we're doing it to stabilize the budget.
On the food and beverage tax side, you said there's going to be an administrative burden on the village. Are we going to have to hire new staff, increase the hours of somebody on our staff? How's that going to work? What are the transactional costs?
We haven't administered our own, our own tax since the, back in 2001, 2002, the telecommunications tax used to all be sent into the village and we administered it. And there was, with telecommunications, there's little companies all over the place that were involved in that, and it was, we would get checks for less than $5 a month. And so it is, it is a burden as far as keeping all that straight. Another part of it is the compliance issue, not just the getting the checks in and administering the forms, but making sure that everybody is actually complying and sending their money in. That's another issue, I would say, more than, more than the burden.
Which brings up the question from my perspective of how are the businesses affected negatively in this case? Obviously, they have a burden to fill out forms and send this in, but whether the things are going to affect the businesses, how will this affect the business, do you know?
As far as the food and beverage tax?
Absolutely.
Or the, it would be, it would be more, it would increase their, you know, what their customers pay by the, by the percent of the tax. There is some towns around us that have it and some not. It's about, it's about half. So I don't know that the competition factor would be there. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would hurt their customer base as much, it'd just be the extra work for the businesses.
Would most points of sale be able to handle the addition of these taxes? So whether we're talking about the sales tax or the food and beverage, would you be able to program that into your cash register? Well, it's not a cash register, it's a POS. I know, I'm dating myself, but.
The home rule sales tax, they would just put in the total rate. They would put in the total rate that they collect. Instead of the 7% in DuPage, they would put in 7.5%. They would send that all into the state. It's just, it would be like one rate. The food and beverage, they would have to keep them separately.
I think it's much, I would agree with Trustee Hopkins, it's much simpler on the business and on the village to do a local sales tax than a food and beverage tax. Correct? Much easier. There's no administration, we just collect a check. And the business just actually tweaks what they're charging for sales tax.
They would just collect the increased rate totally.
Not a rush on this, since the deadline is, what was the deadline for the sales tax?
Octoberish.
October. So yeah, you could do this in your, I think you're having planning, more planning meetings, we're having stakeholder meetings.
Yeah. One of the other things that I think we requested was some kind of feedback on the gaming per terminal fee.
Right now, our terminal fee is $25.
I'd like to see the graph on that compared to everybody else. I talk to a lot of mayors.
It is, it's all over the place. You know, I think our nearby communities range between $50 to 500. You know, some of, some of our neighbors looked at that higher terminal fee as a deterrent to putting in the machines. You know, I don't know if there's a philosophy that would follow that number. I think we should probably be in the mid-range between 50 and $100 per terminal. Our businesses are finding that to be a nice revenue source for them. And so I think upping, upping the terminal fee will not be a particular burden. Right now, it's nominal. Even raising it, you know, doubling it or even tripling it would not be a problem.
Some of you may recall that that issue was raised, and I said, eh, let's leave it where it's at, and that's because one of the towns I was talking to had a $1,000 fee, and they were challenged in court. And it went by, it's the case of Assel Entertainment Gaming LLC versus the village of Elmwood Park. And they won in the trial court in 15, 2015. They won in the appellate court, 2000, end of 2015, and the Supreme Court of Illinois denied cert, certiorari. So that upheld a $1,000 fee. And I would have said, you know, we're safe there. And then, after that, the Illinois Supreme Court, kind of on a different issue, it was looking at the gaming, the jurisdiction of the state gaming board between companies, and said that they have exclusive jurisdiction. So there's a caveat. And I guess what it means is, we shouldn't take great comfort in the appellate court's decision that upheld $1,000. It's distinguishable from the recent Illinois Supreme Court case, but the long and short is, I would say, you would be, you know, fine, as Paul suggested, in that mid-range, 250, even as high as 500. I wouldn't recommend going up to the 1,000. And again, I don't know, have a field for what, how a business would react to that. So, you know, I'm just giving you authority perspective, not what's a good business decision and what's not. I make no claims to know.
And I only bring it up just so it's on our radar.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, I don't think we, it's not a huge amount of money, anyway, that you're going to make, but at least it gets us in the middle of.
Yeah, what we're, we're looking at all department fees to see where, where they're out of whack, either high or low, so that we don't have those outliers like the, like the video gaming fee. Each of the departments has been tasked to look at their fees, and the internal disruption committee is helping me look through all those.
That would be really good to see all together.
Yes, that's what we thought, kind of, rather than taking potshots at different fees, we'll look at all of them.
I will say, though, this is exactly what I was hoping to see, and numbers-wise, so thank you so much.
Well, if there's nothing else, and.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think any further direction on this would be, the next time we can find a spot on the committee of the whole meeting, is to maybe have, you can let us know when that work is done for these different things, and then we can see the net effect of that according to the entire budget. And then it gives us an idea of what we can juggle around for next year. Thank you, Chairman Hopkins, for stepping in. Next item we have this evening, final item for the committee of the whole meeting is under the Police and Health Committee. Chairman Carbonell?
Mr. President, what we have on the agenda for tonight is a discussion for the new Bartlett Police Building and Parking Lot application. Can't hear you. Sorry. So this was for you, Jim?
Thank you, Trustee Carbonell. This is the second time you've seen the Bartlett Police Building and the associated parking lot. It has gone, just to refresh your memory, we are seeking approval of rezoning of the parking lot, which is on the west side of the street. Let me get in this, this is easier to see, on Oak Avenue. And this property is, was a subject of a rezoning public hearing from SR4 to the P1 District. And there's a site plan review for the new parking lot, approximately .44 acres. Then there's also the site plan amendment for the new police building, in the purple and green areas, for mending the existing site plan for the municipal complex and variations for both projects, a 10-foot reduction in the 25-foot rear yard along Oak for the parking lot, a 6-foot high fence to be located in the front yard again along Oak for the parking lot, a 20-foot reduction in the 25-foot side yard along the south property line for the parking lot, and a 17-foot reduction in the 25-foot side yard in the north property line in the parking lot, a 10.5-foot reduction for the 30-foot rear yard in the parking, in the same parking lot. And then, a 10-foot reduction in the new parking lot along Oak to allow for parking in the front yard and eliminating of the required curb planting islands. Both projects, or both the variances and the public hearings were seen and heard in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals on April 6. They recommended approval of the variances, and the Plan Commission recommended approval of the rezoning and the site plan and the amended site plan on April 13. And just to go over again, the building elevations and rendering, how it blends in, and then the proposed site plan for both the building and the parking lot, along with the building elevations and the landscape plan. All those were reviewed and approved, recommended for approval. The minutes of the meeting are in front of you, as well as all the attachments and the building elevations. Obviously, our architect, Mark Bushouse, is here, as well as our police chief, to try to answer any questions.
One of the things I'm most concerned about are our neighbors. And I know that we've sent notices, and I saw that a few of the neighbors did appear at, at the meetings and made some comments, and, you know, they seemed like sort of a mixed bag.
One of the neighbors is here, I forgot to mention that, sorry.
Okay, and have we, are we talking with the neighbors? I mean, not just a notice, but an actual conversation?
FQC did walk the neighborhood, and then we will continue to do that throughout the process, both giving them a point of contact for the people who will be on-site so that if there is something that comes up along through the process, that they have a person that they can talk to as well.
Okay. So that during the, during the construction process, if there's issues, there's somebody they can reach out to, and?
Right.
And then even operationally, once the facility is completed, they'll be able to contact us if there is a problem? Okay.
Has any neighbor voiced any concern?
Yes, there's, you'll read the Plan Commission minutes, and one of the neighbors is here, they expressed concern about the future development of the parking and the proximity of the police station to their residents and the parking to their residents. And, and you can read the documents, but there obviously is concern, as Trustee Ranky stated, it's a close proximity to their homes.
You want to talk about the landscaping and the fence?
Just, just one of the things that did get discussed and, and the setbacks, this is the landscape plan, and it's tough to see, but generally, the perimeters of all the parking lots across, with the neighbors being in this location and this, landscaped, and then there's a fence located around their perimeter. Because obviously, with the police built, parking, and the, it needs to be secured, so there is a gate that's going to go up in the front. So that, it is fairly heavily landscaped. As you can see, all the plants are things that we would normally require of any commercial or industrial development.
No, what about light pollution? Are we going to be able to direct the lights so that they're not bothering the neighbors?
We have some lights that they're recommending that are installed, that they dim when, when no activity is in the parking lot. And I don't, Mark, I don't know what the, the light foot candles are, what they dim to, but they do, they're censored.
It's about a 40, they go down to about 40% light level when there's been no activity for a while. The light levels themselves are just, you know, low, normal parking lot lighting, so it's not, it's not quite a lot, but.
And are they, are they dark sky fixtures?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And from the police side, if, if one of the officers needs to access their vehicle from this area, it's not like they're going to run into the parking lot next to these houses and then turn on the sirens, right? They're not going to do that.
Not any more than they do now, coming out of that.
Right, 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 right. I mean.
I'm sure there are times when you're flying, working out with your sirens on.
Right, well, this parking lot on the west side of Oak Avenue is going to be primarily for personal vehicles. So we're, hopefully that will keep the sound of doors closing and, you know, headlights coming in and out of there, to a minimum, other than at shift change.
I don't have anything else. Do any residents want to say anything?
Yeah. My name is Mark, about 234 South Oak, which is the lot, that one exactly. My main concern is, actually, I have two main concerns. One is the utmost is the property values, and what's that going to, what that parking lot is going to do to the property value and potential resale of my house. I know from talking with the other neighbors, the person that owned that lot previously had a heck of a time selling that house, because it was directly across the street from the driveway of the, the entrance area where the officer's coming in and out. So he, he had a very difficult time, and I just, so I worry about what the, what that's going to do to the property value, values of our house, our neighbor's house. And the, the request in variance to lower it from, did you say 25 feet, down to five feet?
Yes.
A foot shorter than the height, than my height. I'm six foot tall. How much landscaping can you get in an area that's five feet from my neighbor's house?
Well, the landscaping is, is put in that whole gap. I think the purpose of asking for the variances is that there's a need for the parking of the vehicles for the police officers to, and to maximize the use of the lot. So that's, that was the thought behind that, is there's, there's not enough area to park on-site, because that's all for the police vehicles, so it's kind of an off-site parking for the police employees. So they tried to, we tried to maximize the number of spaces.
What about the, the street parking and the parking in the lot over here? The parking lot over at Vanberry, that municipal lot, which is hardly ever full? It seems to me like putting a parking lot right in the middle of two residential houses is ridiculous. I mean, where, where else would, where else would you do that? I mean, where, where, is there a precedent out there anywhere where there's a parking lot in the middle of two residential houses?
Well, the, the parking lot that currently is there is where the new building's going to go. So they are replacing the parking lot with the building, and then we're making up parking for the police officers in this location, this location, and then over in that side for their employees. The parking lot at the corner is, is a public parking lot mainly used for business purposes. And we obviously have the front here that has, has parking for the residents as well as employees, but the site is, is maximized for, for the use that, that it's intended to, which is the expansion of the police station.
Has there been any research into what that would potentially do to the, to the property values of the neighboring houses?
We have not done a property value research, we've done land appraisals for.
Planning zone, Board of Appeals.
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm just surprised that you would put a parking lot in the middle of two residential houses and that you would put it within five feet of the neighboring house. That's my concern.
Thank you. If I could just sort of interrupt with a question that kind of brings to my mind. If additional land becomes available for parking, are we able to shrink the size of this existing lot? Would that be possible? Would we be able to jockey that around? Theoretically.
I think theoretically, if you were to acquire enough land and, and counted how many spaces we're going to need, if you went north or anywhere, you could, you could create a bigger setback on the parking spaces, sure. It could be redesigned, and it's obviously going to cost money, but you could do that.
Because right now, from my understanding, we have officers parking their personal vehicles on the street.
Yes.
And this is going to alleviate that, correct?
That's the intent.
So, you know, I don't know which is the better option, but I appreciate your comments, sir.
Thank you.
At this point, it's ready to move on to the Village Board for a final vote on, on all the requests, the variances, the site plan amendment, and the rezoning.
There's no objection, let's do that.
All right.
We'll move it on, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonell. End our committee of the whole meeting, I'll enter. End our committee of the whole meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Trustee Cammer, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.